I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of September. First item of business is to accept the agenda since we're all here, there can't be any remote attendance.
I move that we accept the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously. So let's move on to public comment, is there anyone from the public here today who would like to address the board? Seeing no indication of such, then we can move on to UPD new staff introductions, I think we've got a couple of those tonight.
Corky, which was listed first, is out tonight, so we'll need to reschedule with Jacob Meyer.
Okay.
Well, those of you that do not know me, I'm Shane Dool, I'm the Facility Maintenance Supervisor here at the Park District, and I've been here about 27 years or so, but I'm here to introduce Chris Eckridge, Christopher Eckridge, he's our new custodian, full-time. We've been waiting on this position for quite some time, and we're happy to have him onboard. His hours are going to be Monday through Friday, 1:00 to 9:30, so he's-
Oh, perfect.
The evening shift is pretty important for, and what he'll do is, he'll travel, he's like a facility monitor, so ESS would clean at night at Nature Center, Phillips and Brookings, and during normal operating hours, Christopher would travel and make sure the facilities are clean during day camps or rentals and do the setups and that type of thing. And then when we have kind of a slow time, then he'll do like some of the floor polishing, stripping and waxing if it's needed, so most of that stuff will be planned, but there are times where there might have a little break when he's doing some of the maintenance, and he can keep up with the floor polishing, which is something we've been wanting to do for a long time, because if you do a lot of that, then you have to do less of the stripping and waxing, which takes a lot of time.
Oh, really?
So, we're pretty happy to have him here, and he's doing well. He has to adjust to all the alarms.
Oh, man! Did they tell you that before you took the job?
Which is unusual, because most staff members, they don't have to take on these alarms each night.
Right.
Usually it's, you know, one will be one or two of them, but with him, he has to know the alarms at the Nature Center, Phillips, here, Lille, so he's catching on to that, so it takes a little time, but he's doing a great job.
And that is the worst sound in the world, the alarm.
I've done it.
I have too, and man, it just scares the bejeebers out of me.
And we have a process for that, so he's fully aware of, you know, accidents do happen, and so there's procedure to, you know, to straighten out the alarm calls, so.
Cool.
We're happy to have him here.
Awesome.
Probably about, what?
Started July 30th.
Yeah, July 30th, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, I am, yes, I am, I'm really enjoying it, I appreciate the opportunity, it's definitely, it's definitely one of the greatest opportunities I've had, employment-wise, so I'm very appreciative of it, as well as my family, so.
You're working with a pretty terrific bunch of people, I think, so, yeah, they're good at what they do, and they're smart about what they do, and, yeah.
Glad you're here.
Welcome.
We are welcome.
Welcome.
He's actually working right now, so.
Just don't hit the alarm as you go up.
A little break right now, so.
Yeah, you're, well, and you know, you're the one that makes the rest of us look good, because if the buildings don't look good, then the rest of us, the rest of us don't look good, so you have a really, I mean, it's a really important, an important job, and so we're glad to have somebody to get on the-
Thank you, thank you.
Cool.
Shane.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate coming out.
Sure.
You know, in the old, in the old days, when Mike and I were starting out on the board, staff was here, I mean, most of the staff was here, and that all the reports that are written out were presented, yeah, but that, you didn't ever, did you have to do that, Shane, I don't remember?
No, you mean for the, like, the department-
Yeah, the department reports of the board meeting, did you?
I recall when Mike was here, that we have like a monthly to-do list, and so each of those points were listed in the report, but now it's more of a pick of one topic-
Yeah.
And describe something you did that month, so.
Yeah, so us old timers recognize Shane, the rest of you guys are, he's fortunate.
We usually have about four pages of monthly stuff, so it's, it's long.
It's always interesting to see what's, to see what's going on, yeah.
A lot of interesting things.
Well, it's nice to see you too.
Pardon me?
It's nice to see you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Come back again.
We will.
Okay.
We will, thank you.
Thanks for coming out here.
Good night.
Okay, next item of business is the UpDAC report.
So, I am going to introduce our new UpDAC Chair, Melissa Logston took over in August, and, well, actually, she took over a touch early, because Roger moved on to the board. So, when Roger stepped off, Melissa said she would give it a try, and she very happily has decided she will take the job and run with it, and I think she's just working out fabulously, she seems very happy, and I'm going to let her give the report.
So, our August meeting was not the regular meeting, it was our first of the year, first year UpDAC members attended, we were out at the Interpretive Center, and we had a lovely spread of food and connected with the new UpDAC members, we summarized a little bit about what happened in the previous year, which is hard to summarize in a few minutes, and we opened up a lot of time for discussion, the first years are all very engaged and talkative, and I believe that this next year is going to be really exciting, because you can just see buy-in, and like, they're not afraid to talk and engage with the topics, and as we move forward, we're also going to have 15-minute time of discussion at each of our UpDAC meetings each month, where we're going to actually have more discussion time. So I believe that we're going to actually have a lot of positive feedback coming from each meeting, and our theme for most of this coming year is going to be talking about the underserved populations, and what the plans are, and helping brainstorm with that.
Titan.
Melissa's a lovely result of some of us being in a water aerobics class.
Well, yes, you know, you talk about all the fun things we do during classes that we participate in, and you pique people's interest, and before long, they want to know more, and then they want to do more, so it's really been, it's been a win-win for us, because Melissa comes to it as an actual program participant first, and then an UpDAC member, so it's really worked out well.
I can relate, I was at cardio kickboxing.
Classes are dangerous as well.
But I really appreciate your time and coming to the board meeting and meeting with us, so thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
And thank you for taking on the chair.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I'm going to second, it's going to be a really good year, where we've got a lot of exciting things in store.
Thank you very much, and for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us on to our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda for this evening, our approval of the minutes from the August 14th regular board meeting, the receipt of our usual monthly reports from the three divisions of the district, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to accept the August 2018 philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, approval of commissioner travel, meal and lodging expenses, and approval of employee travel, meal and lodging expenses. And under our rules, any or all of these items can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action at the behest of a single board member, is there any board member wishing to remove any of these items from our consent agenda this evening? Seeing no such indication, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the items on it in an omnibus fashion?
I move that we approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our rules, there's to be no discussion of these items once we've moved past the point of taking them off, so a roll call should be taken, we can start to the left with LaShonda.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And that takes us to the financial reports.
Good evening, everyone, tonight I'm going to talk about the performance of the Park District for the month of August, so August is four months into the fiscal year, so about a third of the way through, and the first report I'm going to discuss is called the Fund Balance Report, it is the first of two budget reports, and this report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the four months ending August 31st. So the first page of this report, we call Sum 1, and this is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund, revenues for this period were $6,138,000, which is an increase of $1,101,000 over July. $4,631,000 of total revenues were from property taxes, and we've received 2/3 of our property tax distributions for levy year 2017. In earlier months of the year, revenues will exceed expenditures considerably, since the bulk of our property tax payments are received in June and September. Expenditures for this period were $3,460,000, which is a change of $987,000 since July, and we have a surplus after four months, this means there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $2,679,000, and a net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after four months of $2,453,000. If you turn on to the next page, this is, this is the page that we call Sum 2, and this shows only the Capital Improvements Fund, you can see that revenues for the four month period were $38,000, and expenditures were $463,000, expenditures exceed revenues, and there was a deficit of $425,000. A transfer in from the English Fund brings the total of other sources to $226,000, which leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $200,000. And lastly, Sum 3 is the first two pages added together, it's the summary for the entire district, and at the end of August, we have total net ending fund balance for the district of $9,635,000. Following that are the summary, summary reports for the individual funds, which are General, Recreation, Museum and Indoor Pool. And if you don't have any questions about the Fund Balance Report, we can move on. So the next report is called the Budget Analysis with History Report, this report shows a historical comparison of the same four-month period of the current year and the prior three years. So we're at 33% of the year, which is a number you can compare to. The highlights of this report, the first section is all funds district-wide, that's on the first three pages, and if you, you could see that we've reached 67% of our, all of our property tax disbursements so far for the year. If you move to Page 2, in the middle of the page there, total revenues and transfers in for this period were $6,453,000, and we're pretty much right on track with where we were the prior three years, as far as percentage-wise, and as far as dollar-wise, we're a little ahead. And expenditures are tracking pretty mu, pretty much ratably, an exception would be contractual services are pretty far ahead dollar-wise from the prior three years, you can see it's at the last line on Page 2, and the primary factor in that is the pool pack replacement, because that's hitting that line, and so that was a big chunk of change in August that we spent, and July too, because this is the full four-month period of so far the fiscal year. So you can see, you know, if you look at the three years prior, they're all pretty much on track, and then boom, we have a lot higher year this year, but it's mostly because of that one repair that we're making. And if you go to the, to Page 3, you can see total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $4,200,000, with a surplus at the end of August of $2,253,000. The number for capital improvements and bond payments is also up a little bit, and that's because UPD's share of the pool packs coming out of that line, so that also has to do with the pool pack as well, for the most part.
Have we received the payments from the school district?
We did, we actually asked them to prepay for that particular expenditure, because the UIAC doesn't have enough cash flow and it's fun to pay that bill, so they prepaid, and then when the project is fully closed out, we actually probably will owe them a refund if, if they don't, if we had any leftover, but we didn't have them pay the contingency, we just had them pay the base bid, so likely if we have any change orders, they'll still owe a little bit more at the end. So that's how we handled that one. So, that's all I had to say about the Budget Analysis with History Report, I think we're still pretty early in the year to make a lot of analysis, but now that we've gotten through the summer, I think like September and October, you'll really start to see more trends as far as how it compares to the prior months, so this is a pretty useful report to look at. So moving on to the Treasurers Report, the Treasurers Report is a report of the amount, the amount of cash that the district has on one day, August 31st, 2018, all 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested, for a grand total for August of $11,018,962.55. On Page 2, the first section at the top lists amounts that are held in interest-bearing accounts, and so of the $11,019,000 on hand, $10,217 is out in investments. And we didn't have any unusual inter-fund loans at all for the month of August, so that is the same as you've seen many times before. And lastly, the dispersment section in, for August, total dispersments of funds for this month were $1,046,000, and you can see the large vendor payment in the indoor pool, where we paid the second installment of the pool pack replacement work in August, we've also had a large expenditure there in July as well, which off the top of my head, I can't recall, but it was large the last two months, because we paid a big chunk in July and another big chunk in August. And then also, I thought I'd note too, that we had our first-ever spending out of the new Perkins Road Park Site Fund, that we've had for a couple of years, where we've been building up the contributions from the Sanitary District over the years to help with the restoration of that site, and we're starting to gear up to do the next phase of that restoration, and so we had some spending on preparing and updating the plans for the next phase. So with that, if you don't have any other questions, I present the Treasurers Report to you for approval.
I move we accept the Treasurers Report for audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously.
The Supplemental Report of Cash is the next report, this report has the same information as the first page of the Treasurers Report, but it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name, the expected uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations, so you can see on that totals line, the grand totals line at the bottom, that of the $11,019,000 on hand, $1,106,000 is restricted, which leaves $9,913,000 available as spendable cash, and all that remains now in the restricted obligations is the single restricted amount for presence hospital from the TIF III distribution, so all, this used to be a combination of other liabilities that we had, including the Carl settlement, but that's been entirely paid now, and so the only amount remaining is the TIF III closeout from presence that was paid under protest, and that is kind of just outstanding until the treasurer decides that, the county treasurer decides to let us know that it can be released, and I think that it'll be that way for a long time, because I think they were waiting for all of the other litigation related to Carl to close itself out before they move forward with theirs, so.
Well, people wait.
So, you know, it'll just be waiting, but that's all it is, and so that dollar amount only changes by the accumulated interest that it may earn while it sits there, but it shouldn't change much, we have it invested, it's on that investment page of the Treasurers Report, so. That's it. So, last report, one, one report left. The capital budgets, I'd like to highlight the areas where there were activity this period, so those items that have an asterisk symbol next to them are where there's been activity, on the first page in the 2018 capital budget, we had transfers in from the English Fund, were recognized for UPD's share of the UIAC pool pack replacement, up in the revenue section there. And then, sorry, and then donations were also received from the Disc Golf Club for improvements to the Lowman Disc Golf Course, and expenses were paid towards UPD's share of the pool pack, landscaping at the Phillips Recreation Center, and improvements to Lowman Park on the Disc Golf Course, as well as the cricket pitch, and on water quality improvements in Crystal Lake. In the 2017 capital budget, we didn't have any additional revenues this period, so we had expenditures on technology improvements with the installation of public Wi-Fi in all of our facilities, and on, and we also had expenditures on the one-way study that we're conducting for Crystal Lake Park, which came out of the planning studies and initiatives And finally, in the 2016 capital budget, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects, the remainder of the technology budget was spent on the Wi-Fi improvements, and also on the Phillips Recreation Center Siding Project. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yep, I'm going to start with the sediment removal project, if you remember last year, our sediment that's currently out at the Landscape Recycling Center, we had tested the levels of PAHs were above the threshold, that would require us, require us to transport to a certified facility in Danville, our plan at that time was to let the sediment stay on-site for another year, we would have some disking done to kind of turn over that sediment, allow UDRA to kind of break it down, and then retest this summer, so we had samples taken a week or two ago, MET is our consultant on that project, we have some preliminary results, they're not final by any means at this point, so I hesitate to be too optimistic, but four of our five samples were below that threshold, and according to MET, they feel pretty optimistic that we will be able to not have to transport to the certified length, that would be a pretty significant cost savings, obviously. We'll expect a final report probably in the next couple of weeks, obviously, we'll keep you updated at that time. Katie mentioned the one-way study, we did meet with Farah Graham, again, in the previous month, we're getting to the final stages of that report, Farah Graham will be putting in some plans and options with cost estimation on what we could do to repair or resurface the road, we'll have a public meeting still to come, probably in October, maybe early November, one of the things that we'll be seeking input on is, as I think we discussed before, the varying lane widths throughout the park, so we're anywhere from 18 to 27 feet width, so the question of, do you maintain a nine-and-a-half foot to 10-foot car width, and then bury your pedestrian, or bury both of them, so that's something that we'll really be seeking input on at that public meeting, as well as just the overall concept. Our James Room Project, we met at a pre-construction meeting this morning with Barbara and Diatley and our architect IGW, permit documents are with the city at this point, we're expecting to get those approved in two weeks or so, and at that point, construction will begin, and our construction window, we're anticipating completion sometime early December.
I thought it was really clever to have that drawing, the architectural drawing, in the new program guide.
Yeah.
I thought that was really, I thought that was just great, because people like to know what's going on, and so they'll have, and it's, and it's so interesting, and it's so different, that I think they're going to be really pleased with it, so that they know ahead of time, that was great.
Right, and we've had a display at Phillips as well, over the past year, of the entry wagon, to kind of let people know.
Yeah, that's good.
Our outdoor pool improvement project, it's the replacing of the lockers on the exterior, adding the wallet-sized lockers, and the men's and women's, as well as adding private changes to all the men's and women's locker room, that's currently out to bid, and we'll have a bid opening prior to our next board meeting, so we anticipate to have a recommendation for your approval at that time.
Good.
Unless there's any questions?
Any flies in the ointment anywhere?
No.
Nothing that's keeping you awake at night?
I thought we meant-
No.
Well, I'll segue off of Katie's introduction to Perkins Concept, or Perkins Project, we have tomorrow a meeting with the design team to review what's near-final drawings from when they touched it last, we're also going to be going back up to the site to review our wetland delineation, that needs to be updated, at that point, they're eager to move forward, they'll probably have to do some permitting yet with Cor, but we're optimistic we'll be doing that project next summer, and we think I'll tie it nicely with a follow-up on the lake project, may even have overlapping restoration groups on the site.
Oh, nice. Good. Terrific.
It will be terrific.
So I have one extra financial report than usual tonight, that I'd like to walk you through, if you don't mind. This is the preliminary information about our upcoming geo-bond issue, which is our annual bond issuance that we, we do on a regular basis, and I think Dave Phillips does a really exemplary job of giving a little snapshot of what Urbana Park District bonds really are in this little packet, so if you had a chance to read through it, but if not, I thought I'd walk you through the exhibits, or the appendices that are attached, so that you'd have a little bit more information, for those of you that aren't as familiar. So Appendix A, it was just really just the second piece of paper, it's just information about what the BINA Notification Act is, the BINA Act is, and it's a requirement that we have to give notice to the public whenever we are doing these non-referendum bonds, saying, and we can, we're allowed to kind of extend our BINA out for three years, so we only have to do this BINA notification hearing every three years, and we don't have to do it this year, so, but the, the explanation of the act and everything is listed here, so you can read that in your free time. Appendix 2 is kind of where we're at now, you can see on the line for calendar year 2018, that we're looking at an estimated bond issuance size of $740,140,000, which is 30,000 larger than we've been able to do for the last five, four or five years.
Can you remind me how, how we have been expanding this, and how-
Yes.
And the, what the future looks like for the expanding of this capital?
Yes, so with the implementation of tax caps, our debt service extension base, which is the amount that we're allowed to levy to pay bond payments-
Right.
-it was frozen.
Right.
But there was an amendment to the tax cap that allowed it to then begin to grow by the change in the CPI.
Ah, okay.
So at that time that it was allowed to grow, what we did is we kind of locked in the amount that we'd been issuing in our geo-bonds, and allowed that debt service extension base to grow, so that now that we've taken several years, we have enough in a single year to pay it off in a single year, because before we were splitting these dollar amounts into two payments, and so we would put the larger amount in the current year, and then we'd pass on whatever was left in the, in the smaller year, but now that smaller amount has gotten shrunk so small that it's gone, and so now we get to do one-year bond issuances, which is fantastic, because we get a lot better interest rates. And we were getting great interest rates for the first year anyway, but it was that second year that bogs you down, because basically you're loaning out money an extra year longer. So, the plan for many years that Dottie really enacted was to allow that debt service extension base to build up, and while, and until we could have the capacity to do these one-year bond issuances, which is, this is the first year that we can do that. So the debt service extension base allows us to levy money into our bond fund that allows us to pay these bonds, the bonds fund our capital improvements budget, so there's really a couple different funds involved, and they're kind of unrelated, yet they interact with each other, so. So, I mean, we had any- So, so, I mean, we at any point could say, well, we're actually going to issue 2 million in bonds, but then we'll be back to having multiple years of debt service extension base needed to pay those off, and we'd be stuck again with these smaller bond issuances to build it back up. So, but that's something Dave suggested to us. If we really had a larger project, we wanted to undertake and say, boom, we need 2 million right now. We, we do have the capacity to do that. We aren't extended beyond what we're allowed to do as far as debt limits. But it would just, it would kind of rock our plan. So, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can see going forward, now that we've reached that, we can fully take advantage of our debt service extension base. And so, you can see, beginning in 19, we can do 823,000. In 2020, we can do 836 in 2021.
Yeah, that's a whole lot more in short time.
So, yeah. So, now that we've really stuck to our plan for these years, we're going to reap the benefits of that.
That's great.
But keep in mind, those are estimates, and they can be affected by what the CPI is.
Right, yep.
Or not, and what the actual interest rates are.
Right. Correct.
So, so those estimates could, could fluctuate considerably.
Right, but I mean, considering that...
The basic point, however, is indeed represented there. We're, we're on an upswing with what should be available this year.
That was a great segue into Appendix B. Appendix B shows the, the change in the debt service extension base since the beginning of, not the beginning of time, but since it began, since it began to not be frozen any longer. So, you can see for 2008, '09, it was frozen at that 709,810. And then it slowly began to grow, grow, grow. And you, and you can see though that for the estimated amounts, just like Michael said, they estimate a change in CPI of 1.5, which they had actually estimated for this current year too. And they had thought that our bond issuance would be about 730,000, but because the CPI was 2.1, it allowed us to do the 740 instead. So, we actually saw an increase in what we expected in our estimate for this year. So, and I don't think we've, we don't know the CPI for next year yet, so we'll have to wait on, on that. But they try to be fairly conservative in their estimates, and that 1.5 is probably a pretty good number to use right now if you look at the history. If you move on to, I don't want to spend too, too much more time on this, but if you move on to Exhibit C, C1 is our bond issue that we did last, which was in December of 2017. And so, you can see the remaining payments that we have to make on that bond. This is the bond payment schedule. Then if you go to Exhibit C2, this is the preliminary estimated bond payment schedule for our single year issue that we're looking to do this year for December 2018. And so, you can see the estimated bond payments on that. And then now, this is even new this year, they're projecting out next year's as well. So, Exhibit C3 is what our potential preliminary estimated bond issuance might look like for December 2019 if, you know, if their estimates hold true at all as far as changes in CPI, et cetera. So, and interest rates. And they try to be pretty conservative with their interest rates, too. Spear does a really great job. And then finally, Exhibit D is, I actually really, poor Andy is not here, but I really wanted to point out to Andy that the bond issuance costs are estimated here as $10,700. So, we need to change that in our 2019 estimate because I think we were estimating it based on last year's bond issuance costs, which were 9,800. So, we need to change, update that because they tell us here how much it's going to cost us. And then Exhibits E1 and E2 are the full repayment schedules for our alternate revenue source bonds, the ones that, the big bonds that we issued in 2010 and 2011. And finally, Exhibit E3 is the combined annual debt service that's expected to repay those payments. So, it gives you an estimate of, for cash flow purposes, so you can look and see, okay, I need $999,000 in 2018 to make those two bond payments. So, it's just for planning. But it gives you an idea, this is like the big picture of all of the park districts' near-term debt payments and future debt payments that we know of. You know, not projecting those geo-bonds out more than next year, but gives you an idea of where we're, where we're going. Any questions about that? I think I'm done.
Hey, great. Thanks very much, Katie. Moving on to the Executive Director's Report.
Great. Thank you, Michael. First, I just want to start out by thanking all the commissioners for all the work you guys do, for our viewers that are at home who might think maybe you just come one evening a month and sit here and work with staff at the table. Just want to point out for the viewers at home, all of our board is working on study groups, helping staff on special projects, serving on other committees like our Natural Areas Committee, making community visits, touring facilities, encouraging staff, working with UPDAC, recruiting UPDAC. So, it's a really strong commitment. We really appreciate all of your time and effort. I'm trying to work on being more thankful, and so I thought it'd be good to not forget our board who do such a great job. That again, it's a...
Good for the money, you know.
It's exactly, it's an active board position. So, it's a lot of work, and it really shows. I think the staff appreciates it, and we really feed off your enthusiasm. So, I did want to start with that. Second, just want to mention, this month's Community Coalition meeting was kind of a mixed feeling. Obviously, you're aware of the shootings that have occurred, and there was a local death with a younger person. And, you know, we're just struggling. I'll just lay it out there. I mean, while we feel we've succeeded in a lot of areas, I do not want to diminish every single agency in town that has really stepped up and started working in a collaborative way. But when things like that happen, it really sets people back. So, we, even at our last meeting, started kind of wondering, you know, what else can we do? What should we be doing? And it kind of helped reinforce, let's keep doing what we're doing, making progress, setting goals each year, reaching them. But I did want to mention that, obviously, that's not the direction we want to go. We want to go in the opposite direction. So, reducing the number of shootings and the amount of violence still is one of our top, you know, priorities and pillars. We do have other areas. We're looking at health and wellness and the whole family with education, that sort of thing. And we're still doing things like that. But obviously, the more, you know, violent issues seem to take space in the newspaper if, if nowhere else. So, we're aware of it, and, and we're tracking it and, and working to combat that. Continuing to do some new outreach work, working with Elsie and Corky with Salt and Light in that neighborhood. We're getting some really good feedback, so we're excited about that. I think the UPDAC report that Melissa presented was right on. I think we had an excellent kickoff, and we see a lot of enthusiasm with, with the new UPDAC people, so we're excited about that. I think our next month's program will be update on our Outreach and Wellness Action Plan. So, we know UPDAC's focus, and that's sort of our theme over the next year. Obviously, we'll talk about other topics, but we want to somehow bring it back to how does it impact or affect underrepresented or underserved people. Some things staff is working on at the leadership level, we want to take a fresh look at some of our banning procedures, making sure that we're communicating with our BANA police. And we do have some incidences at the parks and facilities that might result in banning somebody for short periods or longer periods of time. And we just want to make sure we're coordinating that. So, we'll continue to work on that. Just our upcoming fall staff retreat is October 16th. I believe we'll be at Allentown Park this year, so we're looking forward to that and have a interesting and educational day planned for that. Staff's working together on several grant applications. I think we reported last month, NRPA, the OSLAD, which we have some business on, and the Safe Routes to School. So, we're really trying to capture, they're coming up quick. So, we're trying to mobilize and, and work as fast as we can. Kickoo Rail Trail, we're continuing to work in a collaborative way with our Vermillion County partners. We're really excited about our progress there. There's some fundraising and efforts going on over there. So, it's, it is kind of fun and rewarding to see that county get really excited about what's about to come, you know, their way and continue to advocate for our expansion of KRT with our, you know, study that looks in the next section to downtown Urbana through the State Planning and Research Grant. So, we're very pleased about that. We're also trying to work on getting a couple of bike-related articles in the January, February issue of Parks and Rec Magazine. We, a couple of bike groups have visited with IAPD and suggested the magazine might want to take a look at that. And so, they're kind of turning it around and challenging us to write some articles. So, I think UPD will have one, and I believe the Forest Preserve District is also working on a trail-related article. Just some updates, kind of moving in the fall, we tend to do a lot of our sculptor work at that, at that time. We've just installed the piece at Phillips. We have something in the works to replace the piece at Lille. New piece looking at Ambucks, which is really kind of a gateway park, and we're trying to match what MTD has out there. And then we'll be focused on Meadowbrook and the renewals and, and probably taking out a few of the older pieces and, and working on bringing some new pieces in. The National Racket and Park Association's National Conference is in mid-October in Indianapolis, so we'll be all attending that, and we look forward to that. Just a reminder for anybody at home that might be watching on the dollar side, we do, we've kind of committed to working in a regional way. If conferences come to Chicago, Indy, or St. Louis, we'll try to make an attempt, if we can afford it, and have it budgeted. It is a great opportunity to get in that, you know, bigger arena. There's national speakers, national topics, so it's very interesting. We, it still, we love going to IPRA. That's very exciting. In fact, I wanted to add, I think UPD will have three different groups going to present at IPRA this year. So, I'd ask staff, you know, hey, come on, if we can do it. In the old days, we used to, you know, be on the roster every year. And so, now I think we have three presentations. So, we're real excited and pleased for the staff that'll be helping to do that. That's all good news. Our IDOT project, our Right-of-Way project at Lille Park, we don't have any new information. I'm updating that. It'll be later on the agenda for an action. But it's kind of an interesting project. It was a hurry up and rush and felt under all this pressure, and we responded quickly way back when Derek and I went to the first meeting and figured out everything was already planned and the ideas we had, you know, couldn't really be incorporated. Continued to work with everybody. And we've counter-offered on at least what they've made an offer on for the, the Right-of-Way Strip, and haven't heard anything. And so, I keep pushing and asking. And so, we're hoping something comes back to us soon on that. Katie mentioned Dave Phillips will be coming at our November meeting. Did want to open up the opportunity, the staff involved in the study group wondered if we could make our November meeting at a, at the time of evening for maybe an evening minute, meeting, dinner with Dave before our board meeting. Just take advantage of Dave's knowledge. Obviously, he's going to be retiring, and so we've worked with Dave for many, 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 many years. And he's a friend of the park district, friend of staff. And so, we thought it'd be our last chance to, you know, pick his brain. I'm sure he'd probably give us advice in the future if we reached out to him. But just thought it might be a good opportunity to, to meet with Dave and thank him for helping us. And also, we have a number of issues we'd like to talk. And so, we'll, we'll reach out and schedule with that study group, see if they're available. If we can't do that, we'll find a, a regular time to, to do our study group meeting. Let's see. I'll be working with Mayor Marland at the Metropolitan Intergovernmental Committee, presenting a presentation on connecting Urbana. We have a number of, you know, mostly trail pedestrian related type projects. We get a lot of attention with the EMCOR and the road projects and, you know, the beltways and, you know, a lot of the ramps and interstate things. But we don't get as many chances to talk about the, you know, bike ped thing. So, we're going to be talking about what we're doing in Urbana, you know, to improve that, that area. So, we're excited to have, have the chance to do that. Just a reminder, Jazz Walk will be this Friday, September 14th. As you know, it was called off due to the weather, and it looks like we're going to be in for a doozy of a great weather day. So, anyone at home watching that might not know, please come out to Meadowbrook Park this Friday for Jazz Walk and have a great time. Our BANA Realtor Tours continue. We're starting to wind down, but the next one's September 13th. We're going to be in North Urbana, north of I-74 in the Landis Farms, those two subdivisions up there. Not as big of an area, but we definitely want to give some attention up there, and so we'll be focusing on that.
Do we coordinate that, or how does that?
The city has always done that. And then our other local units in Urbana are invited to participate. So, we have libraries, schools, parks, city, and often divisions of city, like Public Works, you know, Community Development will also be involved. And Police Fire, so they always have a good update on that. But our goal is to really get developers and, you know, interested buyers and Realtors together to really make sure everybody knows more about Urbana. And so, we're breaking it down by neighborhoods and zones and making sure that they get more, because, you know, we've all been on drive-by bus tours. There's a lot of information. It's all exciting, but three days later, can you remember, you know, the specifics on that? So, we're trying to really get it to sink in. So, we've had good attendance for that. Also, we'll be talking that same day, September 18th, at noon, the Developers Roundtable. We'll also be having a short part of a presentation on the KRT Extended. So, again, to remind our developers that might think of ways to encourage people to think of Urbana, certainly connectivity and trails, make that a, make that a positive thing. I think that's all the updates I had, in addition to the report. Can answer any questions you might have.
Do you have an update on the Exponement Summit that's coming up as far as your, the park districts?
I don't. Corky probably does. He had a situation and couldn't be there. I don't know the details. We're certainly willing to participate and probably do anything asked. In the past, we've taken on more of programming and childcare and, you know, to free up parents so they can focus on that. Seems to be a good role. I think over the couple, maybe last years, we've seen maybe less family groups attending. So, finding out what our role can be and what our needs are. If you have a suggestion or a need, let us know.
No, I was just going to ask, will the park district have a resource table this year?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
And we think that's a good way to reach out, make sure, even though people might be there for other purposes, there may be secondary opportunities to promote and make people aware of things. Good suggestion.
Tim being you on, on the board, you mentioned bans.
Yes.
I was just wondered if you could explain briefly how that process works.
Right. You know, basically, it's a little bit different between if it's, you know, a dog park situation, maybe involving a dog and a patron. We, we've banned dogs from the dog park. So, that's a, sort of a special, you know, category. But generally, if somebody or an individual or an animal in that case, you know, wouldn't be able to, you know, abide by the rules and the, you know, ordinances, whether they're essentially city or park district, we would need a corrective measure. And so, bans are often used. So, you know, for example, at Crystal Lake Pool, if somebody was just not able to be cooperative there, they might receive a, a ban for 30 days. So, you might be out of the pool. Even if you have a season pass, you might be banned. It's very rare. We've had, you know, just handfuls over, over the many years. But often more likely situations, unfortunately, you know, if we have, you know, friends without addresses that are in the parks and they might be, you know, creating an issue or having, you know, if they're drinking or breaking, you know, ordinances, and they've been repeatedly asked, you know, not to do that, or police are called, usually you have to step it up. And so, a banning is, is usually what might happen next. Again, it could be a shorter term. It might be for that park. And it could be very, you know, if it was a really egregious or serious thing, you know, we would take it from there. But what, what we want to make sure on the sort of updates is that, you know, are the police doing what they need to do? Are we doing what we need to, and are we working together so that we're, you know, always doing the right thing, informing people? It's pretty rare for someone to get, you know, like a annual ban, you know, from a park. But we, you know, we, we're having some, some issues at some parks, so we have to, you know, kind of be vigilant about that.
There's an issue of hostility with one of our friends without addresses that prompted us. In this situation, I think probably a newer police officer on the force wasn't familiar with our, with them. Only the director can, can, you know, do lengthy bans. And so, we want to make sure there's the correct coordination taking place when, when oftentimes it did, once they want it to happen in the moment. So, that's also a challenge.
We want to work on internal communication. For example, if somebody was banned at a pool, are we sure as many people that should know or could know are aware of that? And it is a little bit hard because we have, you know, different facilities and parks. And I remember when I first started the district, you know, sometimes there might be a picture or photo, you know, put up on a wall, or that's probably not a good practice. And, you know, but yeah, we need to have a way to communicate.
It's just like a post office after a while.
Well, I think while we're making some better improvements, you know, we're sharing incident reports on a regular basis. So, people know, maybe they don't know the day it happens, but they get the follow-up because sometimes problems migrate to other sites. And so, if you're aware of it, you're tracking it, you're sharing it with, you know, frontline staff. And so, I think we've made some improvements there. So, we just want to, it's one of those things on the banning. We want to take a step back, review the policy, make sure we're, you know, following it consistently and make any adjustments, communicate with our, you know, police, you know, partners and, you know, make sure we're all on the same page.
So, long-term bans come to your level, but not all bans do, is that?
Eventually. But let's say somebody at a site working with a police officer, a decision might be needed to be made in the field. And so, we want to empower staff. And I think that's where we would think the shorter term are more reasonable at that level. You know, again, longer term should be seriously considered. You know, we want to make sure people have freedom and access and, you know, things like that. So, it's, it's more on the rare side.
Sure.
But we want to make sure we're consistent and, you know, that the, that we all have a pretty good understanding of, you know, what would warrant a short term versus a longer term. I, and to be very honest, I've personally had more experiences at I, and to be very honest, I've personally had more experiences at the dog park with dogs and situations there than, than people, you know, over the, by, probably by the numbers. And to be fair on that, too, seemed like we had more in the earlier years, and doesn't seem like we have as many issues. I mean, we're working with their animal control and, you know, our patrons. I think the self-swiping locking gate will be another, you know, improvement at the dog park, so, you know, kind of, it reinforces the members only, or makes sure you're buying a daily and making sure that we know who you are. So that, that's what that's about.
Okay, thanks.
I have one more quick question about the audit for the fire extinguishers. So it's, there was a minor, I can't remember, like a $10,000 fine or something like that?
Derek, are you aware of, can you, yeah. I don't, where did you see LaShonda in the report? Sorry if I overlooked it.
Maybe it wasn't a fine, I don't know, it was reading in here.
You know, our audits and...
With the fire department. So just curious, do they have to come back out to reassess their findings?
How about if we get more information, we can follow up with all the board on that, just so we're, you know, tracking with all the information.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any serious issues or serious concerns anywhere, so, but we'll, we'll track that down and make sure it's updated with the correct information. Anything else we can address? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Moving on to the President's Report, I don't have anything specific to cover except in the next item under liaison reports, so reviewing upcoming meetings, just so people are aware, the, the Uptech Meeting was moved up in the month to the 18th, so I do, I think allow for people attending NPRA. And there are people going to NPRA, the 25th to the 27th over in Indy. Our October study session is for the, set for the 2nd of October, and the regular meeting on October 9th, where we will be doing semi-annual review of strategic initiatives, auto-review, which always absorbs a good bit of time in the meeting, and the comprehensive annual financial report, and an initial review of tax levy options for the coming year.
Can I ask a question? The semi-annual review of strategic initiatives, is that something that requires lengthy discussion?
Lengthy discussion?
Well, I guess, I just am wondering why it's in the board meeting and not in the study session?
Typically, we'll put it to agenda, review our goals. We could do it either, if you have a preference. Seems like our study session months have filled up, so it might be, but we, we could, we can do it however you guys would like to do it.
We have a TBD for October 2nd, so that's why I was curious about...
Well, I think it's actually a reasonable suggestion to, to move that up. I think there's a fairly high probability I will not be able to attend the, the study session, but that's, that's no particular reason not to, to, to move that in that slot, so.
Okay.
Is this the one we did at the lake house last year, or no? I'm thinking of something different.
I, I think that might have been different, but, you know, basically, we, we try to take about a mid-year, you know, pulse on our goals and just walk everybody through what we're doing on, on that.
If no one's, I mean, I think I would, oh, I won't be here on that day.
October 2nd? Is that the date we're talking, just so I'm clear?
Wait, correct.
October 9th is the regular board meeting.
I'm sorry. Now that I look at the calendar, I will not be able to be here on that day.
Okay.
So...
On October 2nd?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's fine.
So...
How about if we work together to coordinate, to make sure we'll have a month that works for everybody, whether it's study session or regular? And yes, you're, you're correct, we've typically done it at study sessions, so it doesn't take up a lengthy, you know, board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make note of that.
Any other comments or questions? And moving on to the liaison reports, the finance study group did meet at the, last Friday in August, I believe it was.
They can attend the meeting.
They could attend the, the following meeting, already being officially the park district's Much of what we talked about there has been covered either in the, in the last study session representative, at which point, one, our, the, the person we put forward for that or is some stuff we can't really talk about in an open meeting, so. is, is actually a member of the foundation board and, and has a vote. Not a whole lot to report there, and, and one of the other things was, was in fact, the, It's rare for things to get to a contentious vote, I will readily say, but it's, it's important the IDOT situation, and there's no further news on that, so. to, that we are represented there. It means a lot to the members of the foundation as well, so. And remaining things were, were some of the stuff about the grants, which is on the agenda
Michael, would you suggest we put that on the agenda for the study session?
for later this evening, so. Yes.
Okay, got it.
Moving on to the policy study group, is there anything to report there? Actually voting an official approval of somebody.
Okay.
Because they now meet prior to our board meeting. No, we have not met.
Okay. Urbana Parks Foundation representative, and I presume it is now widely known by the Yeah, in, in between the two.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And, and I did attend the, the foundation meeting yesterday, so I guess I can give board that, that LaShonda has regretfully decided that she will not be able to serve in that capacity any longer, which is a, a loss for the foundation board and for us, the informal report to that, as I hope also we all know, but we're trying to get the word let's see. out to the public, this is a good time to say it, the, the campaign for the next century So we will be needing to select a person to fill that slot, which... is now public, and they're moving, gearing up into that new phase.
From a wide range of candidates.
We can discuss.
But if at all possible, I think it would, it would be good to get whomever is decided There was a good bit of discussion on, on how to approach that, now that, that this has gone public, how to, how to get more publicity, get the community as a whole, not just Urbana, aware of it, and, and gearing up and, and moving forward with that.
Yeah, they've had a, somebody's been on TV, somebody's going on TV to talk to those, I don't know, morning talk shows, I don't know what they are. C.I. Living was on.
Yep.
So it's, it's, is it Mark who's organizing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mark is doing a good job of, of working with the foundation to get, get people out, so the information is, is getting out beyond our sort of little bandwidth.
Yeah, which is, is an important step.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good to see.
Did everybody, excuse me, did everybody here get the email about the, from the foundation about it? Did you get? Okay, good.
So, moving on to Uptech Planning and Study Group, is there anything to...
We have not met. Yeah, I don't think we'll need to meet for, what, another?
Couple months.
Another couple months at least, since we've got the, the first, the first portion of the Uptech year going, right? Is that, is that...
Yeah, I think we'll be looking at focus on 2019, so I think we're coordinated for the rest of the year, which is getting close, by the way.
Right, yeah, and, and we have to, and we have to start...
It comes up, so maybe December.
Thinking how we're going to put our, our ideas of, of looking at the Uptech bylaws, since we're, we're following them, they're kind of okay.
Yeah.
And new ideas for nominating people and that kind of thing, so we'll be, that, that's our next goal. I think the year is pretty well set, but it's the, it's the long-term look at how Uptech functions. And we talked about volunteer appreciation, too, right?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Helen's working on a couple of really exciting things. Basically, the, there's a team working on volunteer appreciation. The idea is to spread it out over the seasons, to have some fun things happening throughout the year, and we think that'll be more effective to sort of capture people in maybe that season. You know, for example, if you volunteer for youth athletics in the fall, if you did something in the spring, it's sort of hard to get those people to come back, so they've got some fun things planned.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And again, we'd like feedback, you know, if it's, you know, interesting and draws people, great, if not, we can think of other ideas. We think the mix will be a nice way. Like, like anything, you know, we really do a good job of outreach to thank people, and we got to get them to show up and, and participate. A lot of people tell us, you don't need to do anything, I don't want you to spend money or do anything, I'm trying to help you all, but we still want to do the, you know, good job of respecting and saying thanks to folks.
Okay, we ready to move on then to old business? Now, the first item under this, I'm assuming there's actually no action to be taken, given the circumstances.
Unfortunately, right?
So we will, we will not be taking action on Resolution 2018-12 to, to deal with the, you know, Rusty Avenue stuff.
We need a motion to table.
Yeah.
You want a motion to table?
I move to table action on this, on item, on action item A, Resolution 2018-12 until further information regarding the Urbana Parks District's counteroffer to IDOT is received.
Second.
That's moved and, I believe seconded there first. Close time. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this?
Do we have a sense of the time?
You know, I'm going to say I don't. I think we do in general, our idea, you know, was they wanted to wrap things up this fall and get things, you know, engineered over the winter and start constructing things in the spring. Obviously, they need to get all this settled first, so unless we're the last person on the list, you know, I think they still are working through it. They do have a very lengthy, intense, you know, date organized process, and we've met all of our obligations, so I think we're just waiting. I think probably what we do know in our counter, we, we had concerns about the trees that are out along the highway, the sculpture and the gardens out there, and I got one acknowledgement that, you know, they would agree that we wouldn't hurt the, the sign bed flowers or the sculpture pad, if we can work around it. What they're failing to understand is when you completely change the site condition, there's a both visual and a physical impact on that, so my suspicion is we're going to probably have to have some more discussions about how, how that really impacts the site. I think the tree work is probably something they'll take a serious look at, and, you know, so ultimately, we'll have to decide how, how do we want to roll on that, and we'll try to do as much as we can and get in a position for the board to make a motion on.
Right, well, then it's up, it's, it's, it's back in their court, so to speak.
You know, I think in our, sort of our base approach, we're fine with that. It's the other particulars that didn't get addressed in their appraisal or their assessment of the site that we brought to their attention. We know it, they're recognizing it, because they're, that's where we are, and that's why we're delayed right now. So I think they're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, any comments or questions? All right, so we have before us a motion to, to table this item for, to a future meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that carries unanimously. So now we can move on to new business, action to approve Resolution 2018-13, the local agency agreement for federal participation for the Park Street Shared Use Path ITEP project.
Yes, I'll start with providing a little bit of background for anybody watching at home. We were awarded the ITEP grant, which is the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. It's a federal grant that is administered by the Illinois Department of Transportation, provides funding 80% of our project. The 20% local match is being provided by Carl Hospital for this project. The scope included doing engineering and group construction for a new multi-use path along the southern border of Crystal Lake Park, along Park Street from the corner of Broadway to church, and included preliminary engineering for a multi-use path from that Park Street corner of Broadway connecting to the recent multi-use path that was constructed right north of the main entrance there on Broadway, and that includes a pedestrian bridge that would be a part of that project in the future. As part of the grant administration last summer, we had the engineering agreement signed for IDOT. At this point, we're ready to proceed to our construction portion, and we have a construction agreement. As part of the grant requirements, we need to have a resolution approved by the board that's authorizing Michael to sign the construction agreement, basically saying that we have the funds to pay our share of the local match, which again is provided by Carl, and the portion for construction is at $96,000. We're planning to have the project bid in November with an award in December, and construction spring of 2019.
That'll be good.
Super amazing.
All right, I move that we approve the local, is that the right one?
Yes, correct.
Local public agency agreement for federal participation Resolution 2018-13 appropriating local match funds for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program for Park Street Shared Use Path Project in Crystal Lake Park.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, are there any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that carries unanimously. I did have one question, who provided this map? Really current.
Maybe that explains our delays, we have our slow moments, too.
Okay, our, our next item of business is action to approve Resolution 2018-14 to approve applying for an OSLAD grant with IDNR.
Tim referenced a couple of grant programs we're looking at. The OSLAD one is good news, it's been, it hasn't been appropriated. When last we talked to you all about some of these grant programs, we were thinking we really focused on the lake project as we know it. Lake Edge, Fishing Access, Kayak Launches, Fishing Fears, a, a new boat dock. Kara reached out to the grant administrator at OSLAD and found that that alone may not be the strongest application. We're encouraged to include some more active recreational elements, and Kara had an extensive discussion with her and was able to mine out a few ideas that she thought would strengthen her application. At this point, we're looking at advancing the replacement of the playground, which has served its useful life, and we've had plans for some time of relocating it closer to the large pavilion. Sand volleyball doesn't get used really, really at all.
Yeah.
Additionally, we're encouraged to consider a pavilion. Our master plan reflects some additional pavilions in that West Woods area around the labyrinth and near the, the playground. And the concept of bags is one that's really taking off, and as we talked more...
Did you say bags?
Bags, cornhole, you see how the name...
Oh, 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 okay.
It's called bags, I think more commonly today.
Oh, I'm really out of it.
I think it was at a national conference last, last year, a fellow that manufactures these in, in Illinois, and reaching and putting somebody's in an accessible location near the playground. So basically, looking at some amenities that were part of our, our...
Okay, our, our next item of business is action to approve Resolution 2018-14, to approve applying for an OSLAD grant with IDNR.
Tim referenced a couple of grant programs we're looking at, the OSLAD one is good news, it's been, it hasn't been appropriated. When last we talked to you all about some of these grant programs, we were thinking we're really focusing on the lake project as we know it, lake edge, fishing access, kayak launches, fishing piers, a, a new boat dock. Kara reached out to the grant administrator at OSLAD and found that that alone may not be the strongest application, we're encouraged to include some more active recreational elements, and Kara had an extensive discussion with her and was able to mine out a few ideas that she thought would strengthen our application. At this point, we're looking at advancing the replacement of the playground, which has served its useful life, and we've had plans for some time of relocating it closer to the large pavilion. Sand volleyball doesn't get used really, really at all.
Yeah.
Additionally, we're encouraged to consider a pavilion. Our master plan reflects some additional pavilions in that West Woods area, around the labyrinth and near the, the playground. The concept of bags is one that's really taking off, and as we talked more...
Did you say bags?
Bags, cornhole, is the other name.
Oh, 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 okay.
It's called bags, I think more commonly today.
Oh, I'm really out of it.
I think it was at national conference last, last year, a fellow that manufactures these in, in, in Illinois, and reaching and putting somebody's in an accessible location near the playground. So basically, looking at some amenities that were part of our, our, our planning already that we could introduce that would make us a, a stronger application for the grant. We, of course, have over a million dollars going towards the project already, so we have, we have a healthy match in hand, if we can bring four hundred thousand dollars towards the project and some of these additional amenities, it's, it's good for the district. And so, we're, we're still working through some of these, we've been meeting with playground reps, we've been looking at some different costs associated with them, and at this point, we're, we're, we're well on track to have a grant application in hand in time for, for when it's due, but we, we need your all's authorization to apply, and so we would ask that you approve a Resolution 2018-14 for grant application, amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
Is that, did we used to have to do that, didn't you guys just kind of blow ahead?
It's gotten more formal, yeah. In fact, you know, I was just, my comment to add was, you know, we've seen more formalization and more changes with our grant programs, for example, having all your public input and your public comment done, making sure you have designated dollars, things like, because basically, I think what's been happening, people apply for grant, then once they're awarded, find out they may not have right of ways in place, they might have budgets in place, their boards weren't fully informed, or they have conflicts in, so they're probably trying to eliminate any of the slowdown points, creating process for that, so that's the quick answer for that. It does make sense.
More requirements, and also, they've been announcing these grants pretty late, so that's, you've got a very tight time when it gets accomplished.
It's very tricky, it's a hundred percent different approach than it used to be, and I just have to, I'm compelled to add this part, it's neither here nor there. It's interesting, I've watched over the years, you know, Urbana, we've always applied, we often, most often do OSLAD grants, we consider walking in prairies, in our woodlands, and, you know, our naturalized lakes and natural features as a recreational pursuit. The state views that as a very passive activity, and so when they talk about recreation, they literally mean, you know, physical, I'd say, sports, or playgrounds, or games, or, which are all fun and interesting, we have those in other places, but if you look at our inventory, we are pretty, you know, blessed with a lot of natural resources, so it's just, I think, an Urbana bubble thing, that, that's, you know, we rank that as a high form of recreation, and it doesn't necessarily score out at the state level when they do their state, you know, assessment of recreational needs. So we're, it's not that we're not aware of more active things, you know, like basketball and running and, you know, things like that, but they, they really like to see those in those OSLAD, which are what I, we kind of call the all-around park grant, so there's a little of everything, something for everybody. I guess that's a good philosophy, and, you know, it helps the state meet, meet their recreational goals, making sure every community has a certain number of features, but it just always seems to challenge the Urbana team, because we really celebrate those other types of, you know, recreational, we think of them, I think of them as active, but they're probably viewed as more passive. So again, we'll do what we need to do to attract OSLAD to this project, but we, we wish it weren't necessarily always like that, because I think there are, this is a perfect example where we really need to restore the lake, just flat out, that's the main priority, yet we'll probably have to try to add a few things, you know, which is never bad or wrong, but it's not necessarily the highest need.
So any lanes?
Right.
I had to get them.
Thank you for letting me say that.
This is the lane for the geese, this is the lane for the people.
I like that.
Hi. I moved to approve Resolution 2018-14 for the OSLAD grant application for the Crystal Lake Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and I believe that carried unanimously with all five voting.
If we just wake up long enough to say aye, we'd be good.
So moving on then to comments from commissioners.
So if you get bags, are, are people responsible for their own bags, or how is that going to be maintained?
A couple options, generally, yes, if it were me, I'd bring my own, but we might be able to find a way to try it or see if we could maybe have them at the lake house, so if there's a rental or a group that's there, they might be able to check them out and do things like that, that would seem reasonable to me, but obviously, you know, hopefully people just show up. It is very popular, there's national tournaments, you know, that create national winners, so it's a big deal.
They build apartment building balconies designed to house.
Oh, really?
On campus, yeah.
Could be part of a pavilion, I told them, like, a large pavilion.
Right.
We have, we had shuffleboard equipment in the pavilion at Blair Park for quite a while, and...
Yeah.
Never got borrowed, which would come with our own, but we could certainly have some available if folks don't have their own.
Right.
I have a good, have you got the, the board correspondence, where did that?
Right here, my husband.
I read through all those kids' letters, and they were, I haven't had so much fun reading anything for a long time, and I was wondering if we could use some of those drawings in some of, even in the, in the program guide, it might be, it might be kind of, it might be kind of fun. Some of those deer are just, are just wonderful looking deer.
Certainly, our website might be a good way to do a file.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that they're, they're so charming, and, and the kids obviously have enjoyed themselves a great deal, and, you know, I don't know how old they were, but spelling caterpillar is not, it's not on everybody's can-do list, yeah.
Right, right.
Although deer was sometimes D-E-A-R, I noticed, but...
Right.
Yeah, it was, they were, they were great, and I think...
Good comment.
Yeah, it's, it's fun to read that, and I think that, you know, a kid might be, I don't think we'd have to sort of apply for copyright or anything on them, but I think as long as we didn't use names, it would be good, but they are...
What's the, a class visit, or why, why do we have deer? Who's, who's inspiring the children to write the thank you letters?
Probably a class, I would guess, when you think of teacher.
I'm not exactly sure which, but often that, we get those on a regular basis, you know, when they visit a facility or a park or have a program.
That one I like, that one I like the best, of the kid laying on the ground in the front, he's labeled, his him laying on the ground there.
I was told over the summer, I think, I thought the nature center did some camp stuff with about the geese at Lake, do you, do you like them, or what do you, and was, I was surprised what Judy told me, she probably expected endearing and loving quality, but there was a lot of negative comments about the geese from the kids.
Oh, really?
I found that both funny and probably telling, because, you know, from the parents.
Were they afraid of the geese themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're big birds.
I think fear and, you know, just concern about following the parks up, and, yeah, so a little different perspective.
They chase you, too.
So.
That's good, don't tell Beth Cato and then we're all cute.
But we don't like the geese.
We just remind people they're not our geese, they're everybody's geese, they just live in certain places that we take care of.
That's true. That was it, that's all I had to say.
Well, I went, I went, went on the Sunday morning bird walk this last Sunday, and it was, one forgets how great Crystal Lake is in terms of habitat, and we saw, we had one tree where we had six or seven different species of very colorful warblers.
In one tree?
And two of them right up in our face practically, and it just, it, it was fun to introduce a lot of people who are not, you know, who have not birded before, not only to birding, but also to the park.
Yeah.
Park as a resource for that, so I want to thank the folks who keep it up and, and make a place for us.
Thanks for making a, sort of an invitation to anybody, because I know a lot of times people think they have to be, I think this way, have to be, you know, in, in the know or knowledgeable about it, and just come out and have fun.
One thing I tell people is just hang with somebody that, that, there are so many people that know what they're doing, and then there's a lot of people who don't, and just hang with somebody who knows what they're doing, they usually are not the person at the front. Just hang with them, and you'll, you'll learn a lot.
Good advice.
Sean, I just wanted briefly, your question about the fire extinguisher.
I said ten thousand, it was eight hundred dollars.
When you said that number, I wasn't aware of that. That's why I was like, I don't think we got a fine, but I saw it was just what their fee is.
It's, it's more of their fee for doing inspection and then performing some repairs.
Okay.
And we also perform monthly inspections ourselves in-house, our staff do that, so they're, they're always kept very current, but invariably, you know, the, the professionals find a few things to fix.
And I think, I think John Funk actually said that the standards had changed a bit, and they had to upgrade a couple of our extinguishers to larger cylinders, and so the one at the, and I only know that because he replaced the one at the cottage, and, but there was another one, too, at one of our public facilities that needed to be enlarged as well, and so he actually was able to take that one and reu, because it was already bigger than the one at the cottage, so he was able to recycle the...
Reuse.
Yeah, reuse the old, the large one that he had replaced an even larger one with at our facility as well, so we tried to be economical, but also in line with the new standards, so.
Gotcha.
How do they test them?
Thank you.
I mean, I would, you know...
They test the pressure.
Yeah.
Can they do that without, pshh, I mean...
I, I assume they can, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, you know, it's one of those things, if you have one at home, how do you test it? Because then it's gone and you need a new one.
Performing a visual inspection monthly, just making sure the pressure's there.
No corrosion in.
That the safety tag is where it needs to be, there's a couple of things that I can recall.
Pin intact and everything's...
It's still there.
Did that answer your question, LaShawna?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I was thinking more of a fine, and I, I wasn't right, that panicked me a little, but I didn't see it. All right, we'll assume that's settled, no problem. Those are the easy ones to answer, yes.
Any other commissioner comments?
It's not even at thirty, that's a...
Hearing none, I, I think we've exhausted our agenda, and I will declare adjournment.